Good evening. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education October 12th Business Meeting. We have a, we're in closed session earlier. We started at 5:30. We are now back in open session. And we've got every, all board members here in the room except for Mr. Schumaker who is on the line, on the phone. So with that, we need, we have an agenda. It's fairly short agenda tonight. Need a motion and a second to adopt our agenda.
Motion.
So a motion by Ms., by Laura, second by Cindy. Any further discussions on the agenda? Okay, with that, let's vote all in favor of our agenda tonight. Please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Our agenda passes 7-0. So we'll move on to our, some of our discussions from the closed session. We reviewed the personnel list in some minutes. So I'll need a...
Motion to approve personnel.
She's got it. Motion by Ms. Fertinbaugh.
Second.
Second by Ms. Blackwell. For the October 12th Personnel Recommendations be approved. Any further discussion on that? Okay, let's vote there. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, the personnel recommendations have been approved. And our second item from the closed session was to approve the closed session minutes from last month. We had a number of those. We had a September 8th, September 14th, September 16th, September 21st, and September 28th. You've all had an opportunity to review those. I'd need a motion for approval.
Motion to approve those, sir, with everything but the September 28th held confidential.
Okay, are you okay with that?
Okay.
I'll give it, I'll give it to David. So we have a, a motion. I'm gonna give Mr. Harrison a second by Mr. Schumaker. The closed session minutes of September 8th, September 14th, September 16th, September 21st, and September 28th be approved with the last set of minutes on, on September 28th being open. Everything else is, remains confidential. So that's our motion. Any further discussion on that? Okay, let's vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, that motion passes 7-0. Alright, so we're gonna get into the fun part of the meeting, which is our recognitions. We have 6.01, which is Cabarrus County Schools Assistant Principal of the Year. And we have Ms. Glenda Jones gonna announce that to us. Well, or it's on the screen. Welcome, Ms. Jones.
Alright, thank you. And I know that Chrissy is watching right now virtually. So congratulations to Chrissy Rotan, Assistant Principal at Concord High Schools, who has been selected as the 2020-2021 Assistant Principal of the Year for Cabarrus County Schools. Rotan was surprised at Concord High School on Friday, October the 2nd, while participating in a virtual staff meeting. She is a Cabarrus County native and is a Concord High School graduate. Rotan began her career in Cabarrus County Schools in 1993 as a math teacher at Concord Middle School. In addition, she served as the IB Program Coordinator at Concord High School and stepped into the Assistant Principal role at Concord High School in 2017. Rotan earned a bachelor's degree from North Carolina State University and a master's degree from Wingate University. She also earned an add-on licensure in school administration. Rotan is a Concord Spider through and through and is extremely dedicated to her school and community. According to Principal Auerbach, Chrissy Rotan is an outstanding administrator and very deserving of the CCS Assistant Principal of the Year Award. She is well-respected by the staff, students, and families in the Concord community. She is always a team player and willing to provide input or assistance to all of the Spider family. I cannot imagine doing my job as principal at Concord High School without Ms. Rotan. CCS Assistant Principals nominate and vote among their peers for the Assistant Principal of the Year Award based on a set of criteria. The top candidates are then interviewed by a panel of administrators and a winner is selected. Rotan will now compete with other Assistant Principals across the state through a program sponsored by the North Carolina Principals and Assistant Principals Association, which is NC Papa. State Assistant Principal of the Year, Assistant Principals of the Year winners will be invited to attend the National Principals Conference in July 2021. Maybe virtual, but they'll be invited. The three national finalists will be announced in March 2021. The National Assistant Principal of the Year will be announced in April. Also, a special thanks to our principal and Assistant Principal of the Year sponsors, Cabarrus Arc Council, Lowe's Home Improvement, and 73 and Main for their support.
So we know Ms. Rotan well since we're part of the Spider family in my household. Well deserved. Next, we have 6.02, which is the CCS Principal of the Year.
Yes, and congratulations to Chastity Dolan, Principal at Weddington Hills Elementary School, who has been selected as the 2020-21 Cabarrus County Schools Principal of the Year in a program sponsored by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and Wells Fargo. Dolan was surprised when that announcement at Weddington Hills Elementary School on October the 2nd while participating in a virtual staff meeting. She joined Cabarrus County Schools in 2002 as a third-grade teacher at Weddington Hills Elementary. During her tenure with Cabarrus County Schools, she has served the families of Weddington Hills in a variety of roles, including teacher, lead teacher, assistant principal, and assistant principal of instruction. She was named the principal in 2016. Dolan earned a bachelor's degree in elementary education from West Virginia University and a master's degree in elementary education from Marshall University. She earned her add-on licensure in school administration from Wingate University. In 2005, Dolan was named the Cabarrus County Schools Teacher of the Year. It is evident that Dolan is well-respected in the community and has established high expectations for her staff and students. According to Director of Elementary Education Sarah Reeves, while Chastity Dolan's official title is the principal of Weddington Hills Elementary School because of the way she executes her role, her title should be coach. At a school with an incredibly diverse student population and the resulting diversity of academic needs, Chastity has set remarkably high expectations for all stakeholders and is a leader both within and outside of her school community. Part of Chastity's success as the leader of a diverse school is her competence in using data to inform how each and every student is succeeding and individualizing plans to help students grow. Dolan will now compete with the other Principals across the state for North Carolina Principal of the Year. After the state selection process is completed, one principal will be selected as the 2021 Wells Fargo Principal of the Year. To be named CCS Principal of the Year, nominees are selected by their peers and a selection panel comprised of CCS administrators interviews finalists to select a winner. Each Regional Wells Fargo Principal of the Year receives $1,000 cash award for his or her school and $1,000 cash award for personal use. The 2021 Wells Fargo Principal of the Year receives $3,000 for his or her school and $3,000 for his or her personal use. Regional award recipients will be selected by February 2021 and the state-level winner will be announced in the spring. Congratulations, Chastity Dolan, our 2020-21 Cabarrus County Schools Principal of the Year.
Very excited for Ms. Dolan. She's, not many work harder than she does. 6.03, Beginning Teacher of the Year.
Alright, thank you. Good evening. The Cabarrus County Schools Beginning Teacher of the Year Program honors the contributions of beginning teachers as outlined by a program sponsored by the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching, which is otherwise known to us educators as NCAT. The purpose of NCAT began, Beginning Teacher of the Year Program is to honor beginning teachers, retain potentially excellent teachers, and encourage celebration of first-year teachers as a method of retention. Tonight, we would like to celebrate and recognize our school Beginning Teachers of the Year and the Cabarrus County Schools District Beginning Teacher of the Year. These teachers completed their first full year of teaching this past June. I'm just gonna call the name of each one of the schools and then that actually had a teacher of the year. A.T. Allen Elementary School, Jessica Little. Central Cabarrus High School, Sarandon Abernathy. Concord High School, Rachel Sanders. Concord Middle School, Kishana Tucker. Cox Mill Elementary School, Meredith Fur. H.E. Winkler Middle School, Allison Petroskis. J.M. Robinson High School, Taylor Byrne. J.N. Frees Middle School, Andrew Adcox. Mary Frances Wall Center, Ginger Brewer. Mount Pleasant Middle School, Kristy Jordan. Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, Mariah Jones. Patriot STEM Elementary School, Emily Hoben. Rocky River Elementary School, Elizabeth Beecham. Royal Oaks Elementary School, Kristen English. W.M. Irvin Elementary School, Janie Webb. Weddington Hills Elementary School, Ryan Fuller. Tonight, we say congratulations to all of them and we especially say congratulations to Lindsay Herndon, who is the English teacher at Cox Mill High School, who was selected as the 2020-2021 Cabarrus County Schools Beginning Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Herndon builds positive relationships with her students and supports them through a transformative period in their lives. She focuses on the social, emotional needs of her students and embeds real-world problems and discussion into her instruction. According to Principal Crook, Ms. Herndon works well with her PLC and is not afraid to offer suggestions or voice ideas. She teaches both 9th and 10th graders and has, and has engaged them every day, especially since we moved to remote learning. Ms. Herndon is a valuable member of our faculty and one of the most impressive beginning teachers I've worked with. So again, congratulations to Lindsay Herndon.
Impressive young woman. Thank you very much. We have one more. We have Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month.
Alright, so again, good evening, Mr. Chair, board members, and our viewers at home. The Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month Program is a longstanding tradition here in Cabarrus County Schools. We are sincerely grateful to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their continued generosity and support. It is my pleasure, pleasure to announce our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for October is Tyler Treadaway. Mr. Treadaway is an 8th grade social studies teacher at J.N. Frees Middle School. He was nominated for this award by a student who wrote. I believe this teacher deserves recognition because even during these unprecedented times, Mr. Treadaway has been working hard to make sure all of his students get the attention they need and receive the education that they deserve, not only for his class, but for the whole grade level. He spends time building relationships among our school community and correlates education to the matters in the real world. If we ever need anything, we can always count on Mr. Treadaway to assist us. He makes himself available through his Microsoft Teams videos, during lunchtime, asynchronous days, and even after school. I truly believe he deserves this special recognition. Mr. Treadaway, thank you for taking the time to build relationships and to foster a sense of community that's clearly making an impact on your students. Congratulations again on your selection as the October Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month.
And both my boys had Mr. Treadaway as well in high and middle school. I can verify he is a great teacher. Well deserved. As we transit, we're gonna transition now to our Impact Through Education Awards. And we've got Cox Mill Elementary School and Northwest Cabarrus Middle School being recognized this evening. Welcome. Looking forward to hearing about these amazing individuals.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm excited to present the Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Cox Mill Elementary and Northwest Cabarrus Middle Schools this evening. These awards are sponsored by Equitable, formerly AXA Advisors, with support from Concord Trophy. Thank you to our partners for helping us to honor our students and staff each month. I will work with the Principals of each school to ensure that our honorees receive their plaques in a timely manner. First up tonight is Cox Mill Elementary School, and I will begin with Kate Malament. Kate is a 5th grade student in Mrs. Lewiston's Abilities and Possibilities class. Kate has been a student at Cox Mill Elementary for four years and truly represents everything about the family community at Cox Mill Elementary. Everyone who meets Kate is immediately drawn to her kind heart and playful spirit. Kate makes friends wherever she goes. Many of the people she encounters, including teachers, cafeteria staff, bus drivers, office staff, administrators, and students, say that seeing Kate is the best part of their day. Her most favorite part of the day are her walks around the school with Resource Officer Daniel Wilson. He helps Kate practice educational and daily living skills such as using a daily schedule, navigating her communication board, and following directions. He encourages her to socialize with everyone she meets. Kate has many friends throughout the school and within the community. Her strength and kindness impact the school daily. Cox Mill Elementary School is honored to present Kate with this Impact Through Education Award. Our second student honoree from Cox Mill Elementary is Mackenzie Renner. Mackenzie has made an impact on Cox Mill Elementary since she began in kindergarten in the Mandarin immersion program. From the very beginning, Mac has been a shiny light. Whenever a visitor comes to the school to see the Mandarin program, Mackenzie serves as the ambassador for her classroom. Her bright smile draws in visitors and then she wows them with her conversational Mandarin skills. As she has grown, so has her personality. Mackenzie Renner is a presence at the mill, but more importantly, Mac has a heart bigger than her smile. She's always seeking ways to help others without any thought of what is in it for her. Mackenzie genuinely wants to succeed, wants to see others succeed. She goes out of her way to make others feel special. One example of this was the individual notes that she wrote to the teachers at the beginning of the year to let them know that they are making a difference and that they matter. Cox Mill Elementary is very excited to see the change that Mac will make in this world. She's already had a humongous impact on Cox Mill Elementary School. The next honoree for Cox Mill Elementary School is Ms. Kimberly Stifel. Kimberly Stifel serves as Cox, serves Cox Mill as the school counselor. However, there is not a spot in the school where Kimberly Stifel's impact does not reach. She can be described, she is described as a ball of fire. She is fun-loving and feisty and shares that excitement with all around her. Mrs. Stifel's warm smile, friendly laugh, and kind words are encouraging for students, staff, and parents. When we are physically in the building, Mrs. Stifel can be seen throughout the building throughout the day. She can be heard in the morning as the voice on the morning announcements and seen in class meetings and in the hallways. Mrs. Stifel is an eternal optimist and cheerleader. Cox Mill is an amazing place because of Kimberly Stifel. If you have heard of the great things happening at the mill, it is pretty safe to say that Kimberly Stifel has had her hand in it. Along with running morning meetings, CMTV, Mrs. Stifel co-advises the student council, leads the peer helpers, and the safety team, just to list a few. Mrs. Stifel's colleagues stated that there is no one more deserving of this award. Thank you for your leadership, Kimberly Stifel. You make all of us better for knowing you. Your Cox Mill family is so proud of you and the impact you have on the community. And our final honoree for Cox Mill Elementary School is Ms. Gina Kepley. There aren't enough words, there aren't enough awards and accolades to bestow upon Gina Kepley for the amount of work, time, effort, and love she pours into Cox Mill Elementary. Gina Kepley may bear the title of Data Manager, but she is so much more to the school community. Mrs. Kepley knows the students and their families by name. She ensures that every record is complete and accurate every time and will not rest until it is. Because Mrs. Kepley is so good at what she does, she inspires everyone else to do the same. We all want to ensure that the data is clean and that our files are correct for Ms. Gina. But Gina doesn't get lost in the data. She sees each child, she sees each file as a child and works to ensure that each child has what he or she needs. Gina Kepley does not stop with the students and staff at Cox Mill alone. She is always available to lend a hand to a fellow data manager, especially to those new to the role. Mrs. Kepley wants to make sure that everyone has what they need to be the best at what they do. For that, Mrs. Kepley has an eternal impact on each of us. Mrs. Kepley is the first person that many families encounter at Cox Mill and the school is grateful for it. Mrs. Kepley is exactly the kind of person you want on your front porch to greet visitors as they come to call. She is welcoming, endearing, and gracious. Mrs. Kepley is a true comet burning bright for all to see. Make sure you take notice of Gina Kepley. She will leave an impact in your heart forever. Now for the students and staff at Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. Our first honoree is Emma Barker. Emma Barker is an 8th grade student at Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. She is kind, responsible, hardworking, and extremely driven. According to one of her teachers, Emma is a student everyone dreams of having in class. She has the sweetest soul and such a love of, of love for life. Emma is always positive and willing to help out whenever she can. I am so happy to have taught her. Other teachers share that Emma is always ready to give a helping hand to everyone who needs it. Emma is the one student you can always count on to go to above, to go to, count on to go above and beyond. One teacher shared, "I always knew that she was listening to the lesson and doing everything she could in order to know more about the subject. She was an ideal math student. Wish I had more like her." Emma, your Titan family is so proud of you. For all these reasons, you deserve this honor as a Northwest Cabarrus Middle School Impact Through Education Award winner. Our next honoree from Northwest Cabarrus Middle School is Genevieve Schultz. Genevieve Schultz is an 8th grade student at Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. She is a great student and a bright spot in each day. She is friendly, funny, hardworking, and an excellent role model to everyone around her. According to one of her teachers, "Genevieve is by far one of the kindest students I have ever taught. Her physical presence in the classroom every day made the environment bright and positive. Genevieve is always willing to go above and beyond in every aspect of her life. Truly a blessing to have taught her." Other teachers share that Genevieve goes the extra mile to show kindness and personal attention to everyone around her. She never makes excuses about doing her work or showing up for meetings and she is always smiling during live meetings and contributing to the lesson. Genevieve, your Titan family is so very proud of you. You are very deserving of this Impact Through Education Award for Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. Our next honoree for Northwest Cabarrus Middle School is Ms. Mariah Jones. Mariah Jones is a 6th grade math teacher at Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. As a beginning teacher, Ms. Jones is caring, positive, and patient. She is so personable and makes her students feel included and important. Ms. Jones has gone above and beyond what her job has required of her. She does a great job with creating great relationships with her students from the moment they are in her class. Even through this virtual time, she's been able to reach many of her students. According to her teammates, they struck the jackpot with Ms. Jones. Colleagues describe her as highly effective and positive and she always knows, she always has new ideas, has a good rapport with students, and is super fun to work with. Ms. Jones is passionate about everything that she does and she does it effortlessly. She's always ready to jump in with new ideas and help with technology. Ms. Jones is determined that her students will reach her high expectations. Even if she is in the middle of a lesson, Ms. Jones will change course if she starts to lose her students. She meets her students where they are and most of the time, it is sitting on the floor working with them in a smaller group. Ms. Jones made one of her colleagues rethink car circle duty in the afternoon. The colleague shared, "I'm usually exhausted by 4:01 and there you are, the biggest smile on your face, making kids who aren't even on your roster laugh, talking to that kid who's standing by himself, giving high fives and hugs. That energy, that is why you're incredible. Northwest Cabarrus is lucky to have you." Ms. Jones supports the school's literacy goals by giving new books to students so they each have their own books to keep and read. She holds high expectations for students and truly believes all students can succeed. She maximizes her personal planning time in order to support the academic and social growth of students in the impact room. Students adopt her mannerisms and sayings while encouraging their peers to do the right thing. Ms. Jones, congratulations on your, your, I'm sorry. Ms. Jones, congratulations on your Impact Through Education Award. Your Titan family is very proud of you and know that you are so deserving of this award. And our final honoree this evening for Northwest Cabarrus Middle School is Ms. Jenny Graham. Jenny Graham is the Data Manager for Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. Ms. Graham is known for her patience. Her colleagues describe her as calm, cool, collected, patient, kind, knowledgeable, helpful, and a pleasure to work with. Mrs. Graham is the queen of time management and out-of-this-world problem solver who does everything with a sincere smile and a kind word. She is a true believer in the power of teamwork and values each and every member of the Titan team. Mrs. Graham is that quiet individual who is a calming force when you have questions or when things are a bit crazy. She is helpful and is willing to find solutions. She works behind the scenes balancing two very important areas of accountability for students, parents, and teachers, grades, and attendance. The staff is extremely grateful for all, for all that she does for Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. Mrs. Graham, thank you for everything that you do for the Titan family and congratulations on receiving this Impact Through Education Award.
Thank you, Ms. Boone. It's always amazing to hear those stories and thank you to Equitable for helping, helping us recognize these individuals. Okay, board members, that's the end of our recognitions for this evening. We're gonna move on to Section 7, which is Approval of Minutes. And we have four sets of minutes from our meetings in September. September 8th, September 14th, September 21st, and September 28th. And those have been posted on Board Docs for your review. Any comments, changes to our minutes? And if not, then we'd need a motion and a second for approval.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Ms. Fertinbaugh. I have a second by Mr. Harrison. Any further discussion on our minutes? Mr. Schumaker, did you read them? You good? Is he still with us?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I read them.
Just a second, make sure he's still with us. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve. Approve? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Anybody opposed, say no? Okay, that motion passes. Our minutes are approved. I will move on to Section 8, which is Board Chair and Superintendent Comments. A couple of things from me. First, again, the red, the pink tie for me is in recognition of breast cancer awareness for my mother who is a breast cancer survival, survivor. I pray that we find a cure soon. Second is gonna be, this month is always also Anti-Bullying Month. So every year, the board reviews and pledges to be a champion against bullying. And board members have been, have seen this pledge and I'll just read it real quick for you. Cabarrus County Schools is committed to providing every student with a safe, welcoming school environment free from bullying, harassment, and discrimination. As educators, we will work together to create a culture of respect and understanding for all students, staff, and parents. And the pledge is, "I pledge to be a champion against bullying by choosing kindness, being a good role model for our school and community, being respectful to others and treating them the way I would want my family to be treated, standing up against bullying and cyberbullying when and where it is brought to my attention, and providing support to those who are involved in bullying, harassment, or discrimination." And that was signed by each and every board member this month. Next is again, this is also Principal Rec, National Principal Month and the board just wants to say how much that we appreciate all the work that our principals put in every, every single day. And then lastly, as everybody should know, this is election time. We just wanna encourage you to get out and vote and to learn about the candidates. Our, the school board here has, there's 11 individuals that are running for four open seats. There are three of us that are also on that ballot. So again, encourage you to learn about your candidates, either on website, social media, forums that we've been involved in. And early voting starts on, this Thursday on the 15th and Election Day again is November 3rd. Any board members have anything that they wanna add or principal, or teacher lady? Nope? Okay, with that, I will hand it on to Dr. Shep, or Dr. Shep, Dr. Lauter, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are one week away from welcoming students back into our schools and classrooms and we're all very excited. and we're all very excited to do so. Along with that excitement is our commitment to protecting the health and safety of students and staff. As we return to in-person instruction, we'll implement a number of safety measures, including daily temperature checks for students and staff, social distancing, face coverings for students and staff, enhanced cleaning protocols, and frequent hand washing. We have compiled information about return to in-person, about our return to in-person learning, and other information that families will need to ensure a safe and smooth return in our One Strong Guide for Families. You can find the link to that guide on our district website. Last week, we held our annual Program Choice Fair virtually for students and parents to learn about the 31 schools that offer specialized programming. Schools are hosting virtual open house sessions, and applications for program choice for next school year are available now through December the 18th. For more information, visit the Cabarrus County Schools Program Choice website, and that's at www.cabarrus.k12.nc.us/programchoice. The district has begun a new middle school realignment project as we prepare for the opening of the new middle school in August of 2022. Last week, we held a public information session. The district also is seeking volunteers for its student realignment public advisory committee. The committee will provide input and feedback to Cabarrus County staff and the firm hired to manage the project. Visit our student realignment site to complete the advisory committee application and to learn more. The application deadline is due October the 18th of 2020. Yesterday, I had the honor to participate in a special retirement ceremony honoring NASCAR driver Jimmy Johnson. I think they're going to hold up the check that we were presented yesterday. Since 2009, through his foundation, Mr. Johnson has donated nearly just under $400,000 to Cabarrus County Schools through the Champions Grant Program. I think there was a total of either eight or nine different schools that have received varying amounts of money through the Jimmy Johnson Foundation. During yesterday's ceremony, the Charlotte Motor Speedway announced that it would establish a $48,000 scholarship fund in Mr. Johnson's name for Cabarrus County Schools' high school, high school students. So $4,800 is about one semester's, almost exactly one semester's tuition at one of our state schools. So this will pay for one semester of one senior that's interested in wellness and helpful living for the next 10 years, and that was to honor his retirement. So we certainly appreciate the Charlotte Motor Speedway's generosity as well as that of Mr. Johnson and his wife, Chandra, who are, run the foundation and certainly have supported Cabarrus County Schools over the years. Congratulations to Brian Elliott, who is our CTE Coordinator that serves Central Cabarrus High School, CC Griffin, and Rocky River Elementary, on his selection as the 2020 Association for Career and Technical Education, Region Two Counseling and Career Goddess Professional. Mr. Elliott is one of five finalists for the 2020 National Title. This award recognizes school counselors and career development professionals who have demonstrated commitment to connecting students with opportunities for success, shown innovation in career exploration and development, and have advocated for career and technical education as a viable option for all students. The national winner will be announced in December, and we certainly wish Mr. Elliott the best of luck in that competition. October, as Mr. Walters said, October is National Bullying Prevention Month. Individuals around the world unite with the powerful message that bullying should never be a part of childhood. Cabarrus County Schools is proud to join in this annual effort. Throughout the month, our students and staff will initiate and participate in activities and events designed to encourage kindness and inclusion. October also is National Principals Month. We are very grateful for our 43 school principals. They are visionary leaders who tirelessly pursue student success and encourage and inspire their staff. As we have witnessed throughout this pandemic, they are leading, guiding, and supporting their schools in every possible way. We're also celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month with honors the cultures and contributions of both Hispanic and Latino Americans as we celebrate the history, heritage, and accomplishments of Hispanic and Latino Americans of past and present. Finally, a couple of items for the calendar. Our district will host virtual financial aid fairs in conjunction with the College Foundation of North Carolina on October 14th and October 22nd. The event on the 22nd will be presented in Spanish. Visit the upcoming events section of our district website for details and times. And just want to remind everyone that Friday, October the 23rd, is a teacher workday. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that information and the good news. Moving on to our next section, which is our guest speakers. And it's exciting to be able to welcome some guest speakers back to our boardroom. We do have certain conditions that they do have to follow. Those have been posted on Board Docs. Hopefully, they've all reviewed that. But generally, individuals will get three minutes, groups five minutes. And discussions have to be relevant to educational-related topics, and personal, confidential, or school-specific matters shouldn't, shouldn't be discussed in this forum. But should be followed, the grievance policy. So with that, we did have 11 individuals sign up. So if we could bring the first individual to the table. Ms. Finley Edwards. Welcome. I want to make sure the mic is, mic is on.
Good evening to you all. My name is Finley Edwards, and I'm a senior at Cox Mill High School. Since March, I have been intently listening to all the school board meetings as well as the governor's press conferences. And as I have listened, I have continued to be disappointed. The definition of leadership is the ability to influence others, take risk when needed, and accept the responsibility for others and the current situation in order to accomplish the mission. Do you all, as elected leaders, feel that you can match this definition of leadership? The Cabarrus County Schools' mission statement states, "We will value, teach, and empower each student in a culture of educational excellence." Not once have I heard this mission statement used in a school board meeting, and I believe this mission statement should be declared at the beginning of every meeting to serve as a reminder of the purpose the school board represents. I understand the precautions and safety measures that must be set in place for going back to school to happen, but shouldn't these precautions have been set in place months ago? Put yourself in the shoes of a student at this time. Could you sit in front of a computer screen for seven hours a day and tell me that you would 100% be able to pay attention and retain all the information given to you? Every time the school board votes, students continue to struggle with anxiety and depression due to their isolation and lack of social interaction. Mental health is not something that just appears and can easily go away. It is a serious matter that I feel is not being given the attention it deserves. The seven years of middle school and high school are crucial to students' growth and development. A 16-year-old high schooler's brain is only 80% developed. The other 20% will be in development until about the age of 25. How are teenagers supposed to allow their developing brain to thrive when the most formative years of our lives are being stripped from us? As students, we have absolutely no say in what we want to do regarding our educational preferences. Students are ready to be back in the building. How is in-person public school education not essential? The ones who wish to stay home already have the choice to do so. Now it is time for the 70% of Cabarrus County families who want to go back to school to be valued, taught, and empowered through educational excellence. A physical classroom allows for a sense of structure and accountability that for many cannot be obtained in their home environment. A suggestion that I feel would be empowering would be to allow student representatives on the school board. I would love the opportunity to aid in creating a student advisory board. As a varsity cheerleader at Cox Mill High School, usually this time of the year, I'm cheering on our football team on Friday nights. While our season has been moved to second semester, I have been given the time to take a step back and educate myself about my community and our elected leaders. Cabarrus County is ready to play the game. We're on the field warming up, and the school board is still sitting in the locker room. I've been appalled by the way my education has been taken for granted by the school board, and I hope that my courage to speak to you all has sparked a fire in any student who is watching. If you haven't listened to my message tonight, know that I turn 18 in two days, and my voice will be heard on Election Day. Thank you for your time, and I hope that Cabarrus County Schools will truly value the importance of engaging minds and shaping futures.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Bill Barbie.
Good afternoon. I have a grandson who is autistic. He has not been in school since March, as you are aware. And he's planning on going back August 19th. Distance learning does not work for your at-needs-need children. According to the National Academics of Science, Engineering, and Medicine, we should, especially for grades K through five, students with special needs, and all students should be prioritized to go to school. They, without in-person instruction, school-need children falling behind academically and educational inequities are worsening. Through our CDC, the lack of edu, in-person education options disproportionately harms low-income and minority children and those living with disabilities. These, these studies are far less likely to have access to private instruction and care and far more likely to reply on, rely on school-supported functions. Aside from a child's home, no other setting has more influence on a child's health and well-being than their school. And they provide your educational instructions, create a safety environment for learning, and facilitate physical activity. We also know that many students long breaks from in-person educational harmful to student learning. For example, that's known as summer slide, which is almost what we have now. According to the Northwest Evaluation Association, in the summer following third grade, students lose nearly 20% of their school year gains in reading and 20% of their school year gains in math. I don't know how we'll ever gain back these, for these students. I really don't. Our disparities in educational outcomes caused by school closures are a particular concern for low-income and minority, minority students and students with disabilities. A research by Brown and Howard University assessed how 800,000 students used Zern, an online math program for both before and after schools closed in March. Data showed through April, students progress, progress in math decreased by about one-half, with a negative impact more pronounced on low-income zip codes. Now, since everybody is big on numbers, in Cabarrus County, there's 216,453 people as of 2019 census. There have been 81 deaths.
Please finish up. Please finish up.
In the 065, we've had 18 deaths. I mean, 064, 18 deaths. So as your concern for your student teachers, we've had less than 18 deaths in this age group, which will be servicing our kids.
Thank you, Mr. Barbie. Next is Teri Claudia. Good evening, welcome.
I have a third, fifth, and eighth grader in remote learning. I believe all students need to return to Plan A, and it was very disheartening for this board to yet again reverse another decision, this time regarding Plan A for the K through three. I pray that I can adequately portray how important this is to our kids. In our shoes, you would see firsthand the daily emotional stress that our K through three endure. In an ideal world, the curriculum content uploaded to a school website sounds perfect. Until the links don't work, you can't sign in, the instructions are lengthy, the words they can't pronounce or understand, and after following several clicks, from Canvas to Brain Pop and then Seesaw to complete an assignment, our kids end up spending 30 to 45 minutes on what should have taken 10 to 15. We are at our computer many nights until 5:00 PM. My eight-year-old is overwhelmed and constantly needs help. They're physical and mental, mentally checking out before their work is done, only to go to bed and do it all over again. How much can they seriously be learning this way? Not allowing them to return under Plan A is doing them a huge disservice. Encore classes cannot be completed in the time allotted. Materials are not available, like in a classroom. Once they find usable materials and complete their projects, they've invested two hours of work only to submit their video or picture and then be told that the file isn't viewable. This crushes them, so why bother? Loom buffers every five seconds, and a five-minute video takes 20 minutes. On Friday, PBLs scheduled for 8:30 to 10:10 have included 13 Google Slides, three videos, 19-word problems to solve, 19 multiplication sentences to write when they haven't even mastered multiplication facts, and then constructing 19 buildings with paper. Could you complete this within two hours? This is just an example of the unattainable expectations that are placed on the kids for remote learning. My son refused to respond to his assignments by video when school start. He broke down and cried, mortified of looking and sounding stupid. Despite his fears, he realized that during drop-in question time, he got to personally connect with his teacher. Kids are not meant to hide behind a computer screen. When they know and trust their teachers, they're more attentive, confident, they participate, participate, are willing to listen, and therefore learn more. Our teachers, however, have been amazing. Students' physical health is also suffering. It's suddenly required and accepted to plug our children into technology for more than two hours daily. My eight-year-old has had several headaches since the spring shutdown, some so severe, he's thrown up. He's gripped his head by his hair and cried out, "My head's going to explode," while he's working. Last week, his doctor and I discussed an MRI, when it hit us like a ton of bricks. How did we not consider the most obvious factor, remote learning? Can you imagine being five to eight years old, having to read assignments and instructions on your own, click a minimum of three, sometimes functioning links, just to respond on a keyboard that's not alphabetical, making you search for each letter to complete a sentence? At what point do you consider the adverse effects of keeping them home? Neighboring states and counties have full in-person instruction. They're playing sports and have celebrated homecoming with little to no transmission.
Please finish up. Please finish up.
Finish up? I am, okay, sorry. 70% have been loud and clear. We ask that you honor your commitment to be the voice for us, the people of Cabarrus County. Please stop reversing your decisions and let our K through three return to Plan A, because their future depends on it.
Thank you very much. Okay, next is Melanie Green.
Good evening.
Hello. So my name is Melanie Green, and I have sent you enough emails that I figured I would put a face to the name. I have four kids in the Cabarrus County school system. One is in 10th grade, one is in 8th grade, one is in 2nd grade, who is also in an immersion program, and one who is in kindergarten. I am well aware of what virtual learning looks like at every level. As a school board, you are elected officials. You're elected to represent the students and their families to deal in facts and not personal opinion, opinions. School Board Policy 1010 gives you general control over matters regarding the school system, states you are to provide every student with the opportunity to receive a sound, basic education, as defined by the North Carolina Supreme Court, and be an advocate for the school system for employees and especially students. By voting to keep our children out of the school buildings and continually flip-flopping decisions, you are not advocating or providing students with a solid education. You've already seen the Cabarrus County Health Alliance statistics. The website shows that there have been zero deaths from the ages of 0 to 19. The Cabarrus County Health Alliance, CDC, World Health Organization, all say that young children are not spreading this virus. Governor Cooper and Dr. Mandy Cohen have said that it's safe for elementary school students to return full-time in-person. The CDC advocates for in-person learning, as does the WHO. The WHO states that, to date, few outbreaks are involving children and schools. Additionally, they say that school closures have clear negative impacts on child health, education, and development, family income, and the overall economy. The American Academy of Pediatrics advocates for in-person learning when it's possible. And looking at the county positivity rate of 5.5%, it is possible to send our K through five students back full-time. They say that the benefits of in-person education for fostering instruction and social and emotional skills and providing safety, healthy meals, and support services must be considered when deciding the course of action. They're the ones that recommend keeping desks at least three feet apart when six feet is not possible, wearing masks, not sharing materials, and hand washing. In a recent meeting, it was asked where the information kept coming from on keeping desks three feet apart, and this is where it comes from. When you're responsible for the education of over 32,000 students, you should know these basic facts. You asked the parents to tell you what was best for their families, and nearly 70% of the K through three parents want their kids back in school for face-to-face learning. We know the risks, we've done the research. You've provided a full remote option for the other families. Now it's time to get our children back in school full-time. Ms. Carpenter, last week, you acknowledged that information, but made a last-minute motion to amend the agenda and decided that your opinion mattered more than the decisions of the parents. And in a recent interview with Cabarrus Magazine, kept stating that you wish the board had more time before making this decision.
Please finish up.
There is currently a petition going around, started by Cassandra. There is currently a petition going around, started by Cassandra Brooks, signed by over 1,000 parents urging you to reconsider. I've sent that via email. By dismissing the nearly 70% of parents who want their kids back in school, you're saying that parents aren't capable of making these decisions, you don't believe teachers are capable of teaching in a classroom effectively, and you don't trust our school administrators to keep our kids safe and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Our next speaker this evening is Paula Yost. Good evening.
Hello. I'm Paula Yost, and I'm here on behalf of Cabarrus County's Child Protection and Fatality Team. I am not a paid employee of Cabarrus County, but I have chaired this team for the last six years. Our team is responsible for reviewing the death of every child in Cabarrus County. We also look at global issues pertaining to child protection. Certainly, there are no easy answers, and we do not allege that we know them. We absolutely do not want to review a COVID-caused child fatality. We also do not want to have to deal with the mental health issues of children caused by the death of their teacher. However, some of these children have problems that are worse than COVID. We're here before COVID, and we'll be here long after COVID. I want to speak to you about some of those problems in hopes that we can help each other. In the past on our team, we have reviewed the fatality of a child who died after witnessing domestic violence. In his attempts to protect his mother, he was murdered. Children all across this county are being exposed to increases in domestic violence, to parents who are suffering from addiction, and children all across this county are not being properly supervised because their parents simply have to work. Whether we like to classify school as childcare or not, the American reality is that for many families, that is what it is. You cannot work if you are worried about your children, and school is a safe place where they are nurtured and educated. Many children in this county are also victims of child sexual abuse. Studies have shown that child sex abuse victims are most likely to report that abuse to a trusted friend at school or to a teacher. Right now, those children have absolutely no outlet. For many of our children, going to school is an outlet. It gets them away from the violence and the abuse that they are facing in their own house. It is their safe refuge. These issues have simply been worsened by the virus. As an illustration, our Cabarrus County foster care numbers continues to increase. Normal numbers in foster care are typically in the 100 to 120s, but right now, they are between 150 and 160 children. We are getting an increased number of parents bringing their children to DHS and leaving them. Hear me say that, they are leaving them. This is especially happening with older children. That is a significant problem, and once these children get into foster care, their negative behaviors are significantly diminishing. The children cite that the negative home environment triggered the negative behaviors. We strongly recommend that communications between agencies such as Child Protective Services and the Department of Juvenile Justice be occurring with all of you, because you need to have a broad view of what these children need in the school environment, along with support for teachers' administration in working with high-risk students. Additionally, we have some, not all, but some special education children who simply cannot learn through a screen. Our community needs to have a serious, detailed conversation about many of the things that I just mentioned, because our children and our families deserve that attention. Another thing we know is that children thrive in consistency. We understand that the numbers change, but it is difficult on children and families when one decision is made and then changed or rescinded. Many parents have given up a necessary childcare spot. Many children have been deeply disappointed because they need to be back in school for their own mental health and for the myriad of reasons that I just discussed. While absolutely you cannot please everyone, and I am compassionate to the fact that none of you signed up to be school board members during a global pandemic, a plan which addresses these things should have been worked on and presented to all of you. These are our children, these are Cabarrus County's children, and we all need to take ownership of them. Additionally, we absolutely do not want to see teachers or students die. Parents have had Plan C as an option from the beginning. We know that we have students who are going to want to remain virtual no matter what, because that is working for them. By all means, let that continue. Teachers with documented health needs classifying them in elevated risk category like diabetes, pregnancy, or those who are over 60 should be allowed to teach these children. Many teachers want to go back to school, they just don't want to teach in-school and online together. We recommend that you survey your teachers to figure this out. We don't tell our children that things are impossible, we tell them to figure out a plan. And we ask that you figure out a way to return these children to school with appropriate safety measures for both students and teachers, and that you do it expeditiously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Yost. Our next speaker is Ashley Price. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Ashley Price. My pronouns are she, her, hers, and my husband and I are the parents of three Cabarrus County students. I'd like to start by thanking everyone for allowing me to speak this evening, and to those in the community whom I've had the privilege to connect with. The collective sitting before me has the power to impact the lives of over 30,000 students, 2,200 teachers, and their families. Your voices and decisions matter. You have a responsibility to our students, educators, staff, and administrators to provide transparency and guidance. Choices are a powerful thing, and I believe this board can do just that, but I don't believe you can do it alone. We're all aware that the divisiveness and inability to work collectively among the board members is the reason that we're here, so I won't waste anyone's time airing grievances. Rather, I'm here to ask you how you plan to take the feedback, both positive and constructive, and move forward to help address situations that families and teachers are now facing. Because safe, forward motion is all that we can ask for right now. It's unfair to expect you to have all the answers and to expect you to be able to provide a solution that will appease every situation. But as a parent and a Cabarrus County voter, I do believe it's fair to ask you to listen to the community members who've elected you. I've spoken with several families and high-risk teachers to understand what they're experiencing due to the recent plan changes. I believe that to move forward, we must acknowledge the impacts these decisions are having, even the ones we may have overlooked. Families with pre-K through 3rd grade students no longer have childcare. Because of the Plan A/B announcement, they gave up the seats, and now they need them back. Single working parents who already carry the weight of being the lead adult and may be treading water at work after asking for reoccurring schedule changes since March are having to ask for just one more. Our Cabarrus County teachers, who fall into the high-risk category, are being broadly denied reasonable accommodations to continue teaching virtually, despite doing it effectively for weeks. If families have the choice to keep their students virtual due to health risk, teachers should be afforded the same opportunity. There are so many who I didn't get to speak with, whose story may or may not have been shared this evening, and that is who we must consider. Some may say that these situations are the exceptions and not the rules, and to that, I would say that when we stop considering those in our community who require exceptions, we are no longer fit to act on behalf of the majority. I'm here to ask for teamwork and out-of-the-box thinking, to ask questions that go beyond your personal circle, to use feedback and continue collecting data that will drive future decision-making, to empower our administrators to act on behalf of the ones they interact with regularly, because our teachers are now our frontline workers. My grit and determination is not just bark and no bite. I'm here and willing to help, so put me to work. To serve the community, you have to start working with us. How can we alleviate these issues? How can we give choice back to the families who need it most? As a senior project manager who specializes in strategic planning and flexible work programs, I can empathize with the task that's been set before you, and it is not easy, but it is possible. So tonight, you're faced with a choice of your own, to move forward as you have been or to really pause and listen to those around you and move forward as a team with a reignited determination to serve Cabarrus County effectively, and what will your choice be? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Samantha Hamlin. Good evening.
Good evening, board. My name is Samantha Hamlin. I am part of the 70% who want their K-3 children back in school. I am one of 1,000 community members who have signed the petition to open K-3 and Plan A. But more importantly, I am concerned about our children, our community, and the lack of leadership you are providing. I have listened to all board meetings, the back and forth, the lack of direction, and now I am here also as a voter to share my view. Thank you for this opportunity. Here's what we all agree on. There will never be a one-size-fits-all approach to solving this. There will never be a perfect plan that's going to work for every classroom, every school, and every teacher. Dr. Louder, you are working to solve for the anomalies. Instead, let's solve for the majority. And then you, the principals and the parents, can work through unique problems, such as the language immersion classes. The same goes for us parents. There will never be one plan that fits us all, but we can solve for the majority and address unique problems one by one. I have so many things I want to say, but this is what I felt was most important for you to hear. We need you to be innovative. We need you to ideate, brainstorm. We need you to band together and develop solutions. Lead us. Not one time have your discussions been centered around solutions. Please, stop looking at the same numbers and hearing from the same experts. Widen your circle. You have an entire community counting on you, wanting you to succeed, and willing to help you get there. Here are simple ideas. Plexiglass barriers. They are being used in elementary schools across the country. Masking and how that impacts distancing. Can face shields be used? Can classes be held in the gym, the cafeterias, and other common spaces? How about outdoor seating in tents? Can we use teacher assistants differently? In speaking with a teacher in our own county, her school's cafeteria is completely empty for all but 40 minutes of the day. Is this a missed opportunity? Maybe so. How can we modify and maybe do things better than we used to? It can be more effective, if you're willing to reinvent it. Today, Monday, kids went to school in some way. Whether it be at a daycare, Kids Plus, a local gym providing remote learning care, a learning pod, or elsewhere, most children aren't home. I am here and available to help research, brainstorm, and propose solutions. 70% of your constituency wants to move forward, wants you to move forward, because there are empty buildings and spaces that can be used safely. More than 1,000 of your constituents have signed a petition asking to use these spaces. Is it funding that we need? Then let's fundraise. Together, we can find solutions. I personally also want to remember that our teachers are essential. I love our teachers, we need them, and we're counting on them. Just like we count on so many essential workers, teachers are no different. I'm almost done. I myself am married to an essential worker who has been to work every day since the pandemic. We need our teachers back in school. I struggle with your decision to offer in-person education every day to teachers' children. I am passionate about equal opportunity education, which is what public school is supposed to be. These are the kids who most likely need face-to-face instruction the least, yet are being given what so many of your constituents long for their own children. In one meeting, the Teacher of the Year teared up about losing the sense of community we have built online. I want to offer a different perspective. I have asked my own kindergartner to name one of her classmates.
Please finish up.
She is unable to do so. In closing, I, along with 1,000 others, are asking you to dig in, research, brainstorm, and solve. The 1,000 of us are raising our hands to help. We are standing by to solve this, but we must move forward.
Thank you. Next speaker on the list is Derek Pegram. Okay, Derek is not here. Next is Elizabeth Kingaby. Welcome.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Elizabeth Kingaby. I'm a Cabarrus County voter, a CCS alumna, a UNC Charlotte Levine scholar, and this December, I will earn my third degree as a Master of Public Administration and Public Service Fellow. But my most important qualification in speaking to you now is that I am the proud daughter of a Cabarrus County school's teacher. And I cannot understand why your board is denying disabled and high-health-risk teachers the equitable accommodation of teaching from home. I understand that you don't want to allow teachers to teach from home simply out of fear of catching COVID-19. My mother's fear is not simple, and your denial of her and teachers like her is discriminatory. There are Cabarrus County teachers with major pre-existing medical conditions that make catching this virus inequitably dangerous. The politicized nature of COVID-19's safety means that there will surely be individuals at each school that do not take protecting the most vulnerable seriously. My mother's doctors all agree, if she catches this virus, she will almost certainly join the rising American death toll. So I beg of you, please, please consider the discriminatory impact of across-the-board denial of teach-from-home accommodations. I'm not asking for every teacher to have this option. I understand that isn't something the board would consider. But you must consider granting this option to teachers with documented medical vulnerability. Pushing these teachers to apply for leave is an enormous disservice to students whose qualified teachers very much want to teach them. There are local, school-based solutions that can address high-risk teachers' needs. You can give principals the power to reroster online students to these teachers' classes. Or principals can help coordinate teaching assistance, teachers who volunteer their planning periods, staff, and more to help cover the physical monitoring while in-person students take their classes online as planned. I know not everyone is scared of this virus, not everyone has to be, but high-risk teachers and those of us that love them are terrified. It may not be a clean or easy fix, there may not be a one-size-fits-all solution, but if you do not work now to change the current policy, if November brings a wave of funerals for CCS teachers lost to COVID-19, you will not be able to look yourselves in the eye, because you will know your work this week could have saved them. So, please, try. Thank you.
Oops, and the last speaker tonight was Crystal Swayze. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman Walter, School Board, and Dr. Louder. I know you all are as ready as we are to get back to our new normal. We have 1 billion questions on how that can be done safely. I know you all suffer through each decision, and want to make sure it is the best for everyone. There literally is no right answer. As a parent, I am concerned, I want to make sure we are protecting not only our vulnerable student population, but our vulnerable teachers and staff. How are we going to keep our at-risk teachers safe? Multiple teachers in our district have been denied their concerns and their doctor's recommendations. At present, no teacher in Cabarrus County schools has been approved for a remote teaching option due to health concerns. These aren't just concerned about how to safely return, but real health emergencies. We have teachers who simply can't return to the classroom setting during COVID-19. They've had or have cancer, heart issues, blood disorders, and the list goes on. These aren't minor issues, but truly life and death, health issues, and risk. They want to teach, they need to teach, they love teaching, but returning to an actual classroom, they are at risk. It's not about not wanting to return, it's about how can they do it and not be put in danger? If we have thousands of students fully remote, why can't we have these at-risk teachers fully remote with them in a safe manner? A virtual school was implemented over the summer because parents were concerned for their child during the pandemic. So many families jumped on the opportunity that the county offered all students a fully remote option so they could stay at their home school. Why didn't we look at these numbers during the summer and plan our class matching home-based teachers to teach fully remote students? Under the North Carolina Virtual School, the high school teachers aren't even local teachers. They are contracted out. The lower grades had new teachers hired. Why didn't we look at our current teacher base? We have at-risk teachers who want to teach. We are forcing them back into a classroom where they are at risk. They are told to retire or find a new job. This is a calling. Many will never answer the call, but those that do are being shut. Many will never answer the call, but those that do are being shut out. Our children deserve the best education we can offer. That is what we are here for. We are told we can't do for one teacher that isn't done for all. It isn't black and white. We need to find the gray area that most benefits all. I am sure a student would rather be reclass versus putting their teacher at risk of dying. Our surrounding counties found a way to help their at-risk teachers. Why aren't we? We can find a way to make Plan B work safely for those who can and want to go back, and those who need and want to stay remote. At the end of the day, it is about protecting our most vulnerable as they go back into Phase B and eventually A. Every single one of us wants to get to A. As we look at our high-risk students, our high-risk teachers, our ECE, our elderly, our sick, we need to make sure we are protecting them so that they too can get to A. They shouldn't have to choose between their job and their health. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Swayze. And that was the end of our guest speakers this evening. Thank you for all those who came and participated. We're going to move on to Section 10, which is the Approval of Our Consent Agenda, and those are the items that we discussed last week. Any further discussion on those items? If not, I'd need a motion and a second to approve them. So I have a motion by Mr. Harrison, a second by Ms. Blackwell. Let's vote for that. All in favor of approval of our consent agenda from October 5th? Please say aye. Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, that motion passes 7-0. Before we, we did have a need to go back into our closed session to finish the discussions that we didn't quite finish earlier. So if there's still, I would need a motion and a second to go back into closed session. Motion by Ms. Blackwell, second by Mr. Harrison. All in favor of going back into closed session? Please say aye. Aye, anybody opposed? Okay, we are going to move back into closed session. I think we had a 20-minute limit this time. So we're going to say goodnight to our listening audience. Thank you very much, and please remember to vote.